I pledge the citizens of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending our Monday, June 16 meeting. As we had discussed, Leslie is here to give an update on our budget and we'll open by happy motion to open the public hearing for local amendment chapter 260 code side walk cafes.
Motion.
And second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay. Um continuation from our last meeting, I don't know if there's any new questions or anything on those lines or attorney has checked out some of the legal things that were discussed at the last meeting. Everything seems to be in line. If it has to do with the liquor licensing, that's part of the New York state law which will be followed. The building inspector again will be involved in the process to make sure that handicap accessibility is available and that all the rules and regs per the local law will be followed. So again, I didn't know if there was any other questions. I don't know if there's any questions from the board. Okay, with that, I could have a motion to close the public hearing.
There's one question. Did you, did you establish a fee, Paul Lang? Did you establish a fee?
For, for the permit?
Yeah.
Or actually, no, we did not. Not at this point, no. Or was it in there? I don't remember.
You do it by resolution afterwards. I believe the local law lets you set it by resolution. That way, we don't have to have subsequent local laws every time we want to.
Right, if you need to change it or modify, we know what we're doing. But we did see there were a number of, I think Vinnie brought up the comment about the charging for the outside usage. There were a bunch of different laws that were out there. There was one that they were charging by the chair, some kind of like by the table, some square footage. And the board really hasn't decided if we want to move in that direction, to be honest. So we'll continue to review some of these laws and have these conversations and we'll make a, we'll make the resolution if the board decides that they want to charge a fee for restaurants and so forth using the outside sidewalks. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second is Steve. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, next I would need a motion to open the public hearing for local amendment chapter 297 village law code water. Have a motion?
Motion.
Sue. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so this has been a long waiting. Vinnie, you must have some questions? No questions?
We can offset the compensation.
Okay, pass. So for just edification purposes, the, the reason for this law is to allow a resident to install a second meter in their home that would be used to bypass water going into the home. It would be used for outside watering only. And the reason for that is that you would not be charged any sewer rate. So for watering your lawns, washing your cars, X, Y, and Z.
No second facility use fee either.
And it would, yes, and of course, it would be a second facilities fee, uh facilities fee. So it would or would not be, would not be? No, okay.
You're strictly charged for the water you use.
Right, okay.
Same rate.
Just like the state, it's gonna be a win-win for the village. Saves the village residents money.
Mm-hmm.
Village in turn will make more money on water because residents will be inclined to use their water now to water their ones instead of getting charged that sort of thing.
Thank you.
You know, one other question, is there like, right now it's seventy-five hundred gallons, I think.
There's no minimum.
So there's no minimum on that?
No minimum. The only thing is that there have to be measures in place so you can't backflow it into the house and bypass it.
That makes sense.
The resident will have to pay the cost of the meter. And if our guys have to do any labor for it, they're gonna have to pay for that too. It will be charged alongside their regular water bill. In the past, there's a couple of commercial properties that have irrigation meters. They had a separate account set up. With our new software, we don't have to do that. We can set up in there for separate irrigation meters.
So just for clarity, if somebody's main meter is under the, under the minimum and the agricultural one puts them over, is a portion of that still applied for the minimum?
No, no.
So the agriculture is a hundred percent paid?
Yeah.
Even if you use only fifty percent as the regular, the minimum meter for?
We read the meter. We bill by the meter.
No, it's not a combined.
No, it doesn't get commingled.
Good question, I thought.
Come here.
You're the best.
One last one, what would be the price for a hundred gallons or a thousand gallons on the?
Well, the thousand gallon price would be the same.
The same, okay.
The six dollars and thirty-seven cents per thousand.
Any other questions? Any questions, comments from the board? Susan Alito, thank you for getting us through. And Chris?
Chris did.
As well, on the attorney side of things, getting that all done and wrapped up. Thank you. Okay, if there's no other further questions, is the flavor to close the public hearing at this point?
I see no reason now to.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So for our next meeting, we'll have a, we'll need a resolution just to pass that. Right?
We could just do it by oral resolution tonight.
That'd be all right.
Do it tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, next would be just a review of our first quarter twenty-five, twenty-six financial update from Leslie. Unfortunately, Murphy's Law, we can't get the hot top to communicate to the overhead predictors, so we gave everybody some printouts and Leslie will run through this, through the budget process.
I got a good seat to see the screen.
Maybe that's the problem. Could've moved the seat.
Okay, on the first page of the presentation, again, this highlights the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. Just to note, the twenty-four, twenty-five year, the audit's gonna start probably within the next few months, so I'm not here tonight to present the results of that. I am planning on being here for the last board meeting in July to give an unaudited presentation for the fiscal year end twenty-twenty-five. And just to note, the twenty-twenty-four audit has been finalized. It was finalized on June fifth, and I think it is posted on our website along with the rest of the audit reports, twenty-three, twenty-two, and twenty-one, that have been done this past year and a half. So for the presentation tonight, again, it's for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. The first slide is on the general fund revenues. I just highlighted some of the major revenue sources the village receives, first one being property taxes. The adopted budget, five million, three ninety-three, five fifty. That was the tax levy. We received five million, one seventy-six, nine sixty-five. We deducted about ninety-five percent of the tax levy.
Oh, sorry. I think it all printed out, but it's not what you sent.
Yeah, it's two page, double sided.
We double sided it.
If they don't come out, we'll run some more.
Double sided it.
We don't have a revenue page.
Yes, double sided it.
We don't have.
All right, I'll get it for you.
Somebody can have mine if they want it.
Who? I guess everybody has.
Same way, I just expanded to me.
Somebody want this one?
Working system.
Oh, wait, wait.
Yeah, she's running.
Sure.
I guess, um, we have a choice.
All right. General fund expenditures? You guys have that?
Yeah, we got that. All right.
Okay. Again, just highlighting the major categories, your general support, that includes your village hall expenses, um, the insurance. So the total budget was nine hundred and ten thousand. To date, we have spent three hundred and thirty-one thousand. Public safety, which is your police and your building department, adopted budget was two point seven million. Actual to date, actual, actual through May thirty-first is five hundred eighty-five thousand. Transportation, which includes DPW, adopted budget a million ninety-four. We've spent two hundred and sixty thousand to date. Culture and recreation are the parks, budgeted at seventy-nine thousand, two fifty. Actuals twenty thousand, five fifty-three. Your home and community services, which is the beautification around the village, we budgeted thirty-three thousand, actual to date, uh, two thousand, seven sixty-seven. Then we have your employee benefits, which is your retirement expense, your health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, uh, budgeted at two million, seventy-two thousand, actual to date, four hundred and forty thousand. Next slide is water fund expenditures. You have your water operations, budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand. Actual through May is five thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Your administrative, that includes all the payroll and the contractual expenses, budgeted at six hundred and forty-eight thousand. Actuals a hundred and fourteen thousand, four sixty-one. Have your water purification, we budgeted one fifty-five through May thirty-first, nothing has been spent yet. Water transmission wells, two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred. Actual through May is eighty-one thousand, two twelve. And your employee benefits budgeted at two hundred thousand, four sixteen. Actuals thirty-two thousand, five seventy-three. Your sewer fund expenditures, operations, total adopted budget was a million, two seventy-one, seven sixty. Actual to date, um, hundred fifty-four thousand, two eighty-five. And your employee benefits, hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine sixteen. Actual to date, thirty-two thousand, five seventy-eight. For the detail for this presentation, um, within the next week, I am gonna post on the website, uh, more detailed report that's gonna get generated from the accounting software, so then you can see what these, this is an overall presentation, so I'm gonna give you a detail of what's in each category and in each line, so then you can see budget actual in all the categories. Again, that'll be probably in the next week or so.
I ask a question on the water. How is it that we spent nothing on water purification?
The way that bill's coming up.
Yeah, I'm sure there is. The timing of bills coming in, um.
But they are purified, it's just they didn't buy any chemicals.
Yeah, we're about to have one of the, the tanks cleaned, I think two of the tanks are cleaning, right?
Well, yeah, that, that's a little bit on the side of things, but the, like the purification, I look at that as being all the chemicals. So when they ship, it's kind of like on a quarterly basis.
Yeah.
So that actually, we're just paying, the name of the company is Slack, for better or worse. But Slack is coming, I just saw some invoices coming in, so that'll be registered on the next pay and will be included, but yes. And what Susan was mentioning is that from our DOH inspection, one of the things that needs to happen on a, I think it might be every five years, but, um, we need to inspect our towers, the water towers. So with that, I mean, we just went out to, um, uh, to get some bids. We got one for, I think, twenty-four hundred bucks. Another one came in at nine, a little over nine thousand, and we reached out to a few other companies that did not respond. So what they do is they actually put diving suits on and they go inside the tank, inspect it from the inside out. So that will be obviously probably under purification, just from a sense of inspection. All right, okay.
This is on a cash basis, not on a accrual basis, right?
This right now is on a cash, I mean, yeah, the books are maintained on a accrual basis, but right now, this is just the first quarter, so this is cash basis.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
When you compared the finances as of the first quarter, aren't the accruals accounted in there?
Well, I just got the audit entries too for twenty-twenty-four, so that's still, I'm still cleaning up the year end stuff, you know?
That's the same, because this is just this fiscal year expenditure, so anything that's an adjustment of last year, it's not gonna be in the expenditure, it's not gonna be in the capital. Any adjustments from last year would be capital.
Correct.
So the reason I ask this is we have nine hundred and ten thousand budgeted, we spent already thirty-six percent of that.
I'm sorry, which one?
General support, it's nine, ten is budgeted. We've already spent thirty-six percent of that, so does that mean that we prepaid?
This is mostly salaries. This is salaries.
Okay, but still, did we prepay some of our expenses and they're not considered as prepaid, or?
No, they're not prepaid.
So that means that we already paid for something that, yeah, let me rephrase that. Is this the expected amount at this date? Is three thirty-one the expected amount to be spent in the budget as of May thirty-first, or is there?
That's what's spent to date.
I know it's what's spent to date, is that what's expected to be spent today?
Correct, yes, it is.
If the budget is, I'm gonna spend extra money over the year, and each period, I should have a certain, certain exposure, right? I'm gonna pay this amount, this amount, this amount. So is three thirty-one the amount that was expected to be paid, or is, you know, are some, are some things paid in advance of their actual?
No, there's nothing paid in advance. This is actual cash out.
You're saying it's cash, I'm saying it's cash, but nothing, nothing that's paid in there accrued, is nothing is like insurance policy or anything like that that's covered over the, insurance covers a twelve month period, so?
No, not yet. We didn't get the insurance bill yet.
But you would accrue the insurance, but if you know you're gonna get insurance, you would accrue it, and that's not in there?
Correct, that's not in there yet.
Okay. Okay. Other question? Public safety, though, do we need to have an estimate with the finalized, this contract, where that's gonna land in the budget?
Where, well, we, we budgeted the amount that is due retro, so that three percent is budgeted.
And that number or not? Or, as a?
That's not in, well, it's in the budget, it's not in the actual yet.
So do we know where that's gonna land, or?
We're actually calculating all that out since we're approving the MOA this evening to, you know, figure out how much goes to each person based upon locality and everything else that goes on, for each employee, you know?
Okay, um, and the bulk, the water, the bulk water. We only got, uh, we only represent, we only got the March payment, that was it?
You still want other payment payment last week, so we have some process for you.
I would hope so. June.
No, June hasn't been billed out yet.
Okay. April, May?
We got April.
Oh, we did, we did get it.
Well, yeah, we got it in June. This is again through May thirty-first, so yeah. That's why, I made a note here. We got April and June, so we leave our own May, and then obviously we don't go through Does everyone have the rep day of the revenues now?
Yeah, we got it.
Obviously, just asking a question. All right, so then I'll just go back to the first page of general fund revenues. Um, the property taxes again, adopted budget, five million, three ninety-three, five fifty. Total collected to date, five million, one seventy-six, nine sixty-five. Sales tax, a million, one seventy. We got one quarter in for two hundred and eighty thousand. Fines and forfeitures, which is the justice court, budgeted at ninety thousand. We've received twenty-five thousand, eight seventeen. That represents just March and April, so we're still owed, um, May. The franchise fees is a hundred and seven. To date, we've collected ninety-eight thousand, eight oh six. For the, so Washingtonville Central School District SRO, we budgeted two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we've received fifty-three, three fifty-three. And again, that represents March and April. In the building department, we budgeted fifty-five thousand, and to date, we've collected twenty-four thousand, four eighty-four, and that represents three months. Water revenues, our first billing was two hundred and one thousand, nine thirty-five. We've collected eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-nine thousand. And as we mentioned, the bulk water, uh, we billed out forty-one thousand, five sixty-two, and collected the March payment of nineteen thousand, seven eighty-eight. And for sewer, the billings for the sewer and facility were four hundred and forty-two thousand, six fourteen, and we've collected two hundred and twelve thousand, zero thirty-four.
Any other questions?
The bulk, the bulk water is what, water sales?
Spin.
It is spin.
Finland.
Just Finland?
No.
If there's anybody else that is partaking in, in whaling, yes.
Like the town?
Like the town.
Um, just wanted to make a note, um, with the deficit financing bond, um, we're closing out a bond on June twenty-fifth. We actually, from New York State, were able to borrow for eight years. We reduced that period of time to five years, um, so we're saving on interest earnings, and the interest that we got, um, ranged between four point five and four point seven five percent. So there's a significant savings the village is getting, um, just by reducing the life of the bond instead of the year over the five years. And we're borrowing one point one, six million, originally the four point four.
Can I ask you a question on that? When, do, we originally started about the four point five million or four point four million? I think part of the increase in our taxes was to pay that note. Now will our taxes be going down since we are not gonna be, we're gonna be returning that money apparently, and getting one, one point?
Yeah, well, we're at one point where we had, the last round, we borrowed two point six, so that's gonna get paid back, and we're borrowing the one point one, six zero. And that will be spread across five years and divided amongst all the residents and businesses.
But I think you would show a payment that we, we're gonna have for at least ten years on the four point five. That's what, is that gonna be lowered, or is that gonna be the same because you're going for a lower term?
It's a lower term at one point one, six zero. So when we had the four point four, we got to the, right, to the point, that got paid back. Then we reduced it to two point six, that got paid back, and now we're at the point of a final borrow, because now going through all the audits, we're, we're at a point where we know where the delta is, and we're, and it's the one million, one sixty. And that, that rather than doing it over ten years, we've already kind of more or less paid two years already, which said, okay, you could do eight, but to save on the interest and, and everything else that would be coming out of our pockets over eight years, we felt that five years was a decent delta. We looked at four, a little rich, five was a little long, four seemed to be the sweet spot, and that's where we wanted to go. So it'll be five years and at the one million, one sixty.
Right, but the increase you put in the taxes that you said we have for ten years to pay the four point five, is that gonna be reduced? I'm trying to find out what the tax burden's gonna be on, is it gonna be lowered? Is it gonna be left the same?
Well, the debt payment's gonna be lower now.
Okay, so what is that gonna do for our taxes? Is that gonna be kicked back to us, or low, not kicked back, but say we're gonna lower our taxes?
Well, it's gonna be the same thing that we've been doing over the last two years. You had a tax increase for just general purposes, right? But then there was that additional payment that needed to be done to take care of the bond.
Correct.
Right? So it'll be the same situation, but just over five years, but it will be less.
That still doesn't, is that gonna lower our taxes? But it's, but, so it's less, but what are we, what are you doing with that money that you don't need? Are you gonna not raise our taxes?
No, I think we're talking maybe two different things here.
Well, if you said you're taking three hundred dollars a ye, well, you says enough, three hundred dollars a year for ten years. Now you only need two hundred dollars a year for five years.
Right.
Where's the other hundred dollars?
In your pocket.
That's right, so you're gonna lower it then, huh?
Correct. Yes, that portion of it, right, rather than paying three or four hundred dollars a year, that dollar amount's now gonna be whatever it is of a spread amongst all.
Okay, so we probably won't see a tax increase this year. And you'll just keep that?
Not a fair question, we have another budget yet.
No, 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 no. See, I think we got our resolution on the problem last time, so guarantees it breaks, but what we're trying, listen, we went from twenty-two, twenty-three percent, now we were fifteen. The plan is we cut that in half and get it down to between five and seven, we'd be happy as hell.
Okay.
You know, and then the bond payment, it's a little bit extra, but, you know, we'll, we'll see where, where it lands at the end of the day. And like I said, the reason to go over the budget and when we post this stuff is, you know, at the end of the day, we're not, if it breaks, we, we need to fix it, you know? And there are projects that just need to be done. Like we spent on, we have a company that we wanted to, we're actually ended up using today, I don't remember what it was, because we deemed it as an emergency, uh, job, but your bellboards went sinkhole, right? We had a company go out there to do a water investigation because we couldn't water detect an issue. So in that case, you know, normally, again, DPW would bring, we're doing everything in house we can. We'll borrow the equipment, we'll work with the town, we'll work with Cornwall, and the Windsor, Maybrook, whoever it is, to get projects under our belt and doing them all in-house. We're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It's unbelievable, it's totally true.
And then, the best part, you know, hopefully, when we get to the, to the numbers, we'll, we'll actually see, maybe for the first time in many years, there'll be a, a small fund balance that we can now start to grow on and put that money aside and dedicate it to potentially trucks or whatever the, you know, whatever we need, whatever we, wherever we need to put that money, or we just sock it away. And it's, you know, it's a penny saved. And then we get a little bit of money, and we have this bank called New York Class, interest rates are between four and five. The money that comes out of that interest wise is, is huge. So we'll start to make, call it an investment. But it's, it's, you know, there's, there's finally some light through the trees.
All right.
So these bonds can be about three hundred thousand a year?
Yeah, the first payment, which we do, and two sixty-three.
Two sixty-three.
Two sixty-three.
Yeah, that's with interest.
Is that for a shorter year, is that?
Yeah, it's only, it's gonna be five year.
No, but I mean, is the first, the first year twelve months, or is it?
No, it's a full year, yeah, it's a full year, yeah. It ranges from two sixty-three to two sixty-six for the, for the model.
For the principal interest?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Leslie, appreciate it. Okay, a portion now is come, a public comment on agenda items, if anyone has anything? Yes, sir.
What exactly is the Cowbridge? Is it the old stone arch, or is it the new square?
The which one, sir?
The Cowbridge.
Oh, the Cowbridge, okay. So the Cowbridge is ours.
Which one is it?
Which one?
Is that the old stone bridge?
Yeah, the one that's, the one that you had noted that there was some blockage on it? A couple of weeks ago? Yeah. Called the Cowbridge, Stone Bridge, whatever you wanna call it. That's ours. It starts there, and then there's a sliver of property that runs up behind, um, Revere, and the other side is showing it to be Blooming Grove, and then the rest of it to the left would be the homes that are, are on Revere. So when I dug into it a little bit and asked, so DO, Department of Transportation, when they were doing that re, reworking of that intersection, basically wanted to do a detailed historic findings of what that thing was, where it came from. I don't even know what's behind it, but they wanted an historic evaluation of it. At the time, town of Blooming Grove said, no, because the timeframe in order to do that would have delayed the project. So they, for on the figuring out the Cowbridge history, and then they went right into the project. So potentially, I wanna say that's why the Cowbridge is still there. And, um, if we wanted to entertain thinking about something with that, then we would have to do an historic research and figure out where that thing came from and. and is there any historic value to it?
I guess my, uh, work representative, the last three years to find out about him, he's come up with zero.
Well, just what I, what I just said is what I got out of the, out of the plans, and, um, and Supervisor Drawman was the head of the project from a municipality standpoint, so I had a couple of conversations with him.
He stated to me it was Old Wood ninety-four Bridge, Mr. Drawman.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Like I said, just, just a project, you know, um.
Kind of like keep it historic, if it has a provision of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we could talk to a historian about, and set her loose on it, and see what she can come up with, just so we know what we have.
But if it's affecting properties?
Do you?
I can't.
The only property that I'm aware of that it's affecting is us, I don't see anything uphill being disturbed, because all that water that comes down, and it hits that retention basin, funnels through, goes under A, Aherne Boulevard, hits the drainage ditch, and then comes down through Burn Allen, and then through the three pipes, to the single pipe, to the three pipes, and then gateways farm, there's no homes that are being affected by that thing right now, we have homes being affected by things, but it was due to the construction of where, how, and what they did with the drainage storm drains for that project, they didn't put a couple in, so every heavy rainstorm, we have to go out and help the residents that live there, um, because their properties are now getting flooded, couple of them getting water in their basements, so at the end of the day, I'm sending, uh, the overtime bills and everything else to D O T, and I gotta draft a letter tomorrow, and tuck it all away, and send it out to a representative, it's one way or the other, and I'm gonna send copies tomorrow, and, and Scoofus, and, you know, say this is really stupid, you know, you, there's a problem with this project right out of the box when it was done, and you send your hydrologist on to projects A, B, C, D, and E, and F, and A is a problem, so come back, fix it, and then go on, and that's the drum we're beating right now. So. That's the Cow Bridge.
All right.
Any other general questions, or otherwise I'll just jump into the, the points, some of this stuff was on our previous meeting, um, we have identified the handicap ramps we're watering, the ones that were just, you know, uprooted off of the concrete, so all of that will be taken care of, Knights of Columbus was out there last Saturday, or the Saturday before now, um, doing their, uh, topsoil and seed, we have reached out to a couple of companies to actually test the dirt, um, it's amazing how many companies aren't that, you would think they're out there, but there aren't, and the price to test some dirt is in the neighborhood of one quote that we have received, it's between five and six thousand dollars, so we are trying to find somebody else out there that does that type of work, because we're definitely in the wrong business, huh? Yeah, it's, it's crazy, but, um, but again, the Knights were out there, and they did seed and do everything they needed to do with that, so that was, that was good. Uh, we have been in contact, waiting for some callbacks on that little area within the new court, center court, where there is some water pooling, so there will be more to come on that, uh, the bridge has, uh, stone has been moved, repaired, area that was washed out has been refilled, so that's in good shape, um, we did bring to the attention on the Village E code, that they're working on that now, trying to get those two books, books merged at the end of the day, and we need to have probably a call to get down some of the nuts and bolts on that, so that'll be scheduled. And this coming Saturday, over at, uh, the Veteran's Square area, twenty-nine West Main Street, there'll be Senator Scoofus and, and one of the local, I think it was a bank, um, they're sponsoring a shredded day from Saturday the twenty-first between nine and twelve, so if you have anything you need shredded, bring it down, and they will, uh, they'll take care of it, they'll shred it, also something that didn't make it to, um, the agenda, just kinda popped in, but, um, I'm mentioning, because this is on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, one to, one P M to five P M, the VFW is having a commemoration day, twenty-twenty-five at the VFW Post eighty-six ninety-one, um, it's regarding, and Memorial Day and Flag Day tributes, Washington Village R T C will be on hand, other to, uh, display honor, uh, honor guard color maneuvers, drills, uh, Stars and Stripes history, flag folding demonstrations, there'll be some live music, long games, fifty-fifty, uh, there'll be hot dogs and refreshments, et cetera, um, so if you're interested, there are tickets, um, you could reach out to Atreasi L. at eight four five, five nine seven, seven one two six. And this is also behind the scenes, it's sponsored by Black Rock Fishing Game Club, so if you can make it, please try to get there and support your VFW. Does anybody on the board have anything else?
Much to say about it, but I believe it was the fourteenth of this month, there was an automatic lift of the building moratorium.
Sometime around that date, I don't know the exact date.
We don't have an exact date, it is an automatic lift, and we are no longer in a building moratorium.
I couldn't hear that, could you?
We are no longer in the building moratorium, it was an automatic lift, we, for some reason, are having difficulty confirming the exact date, but I believe it was the fourteenth of this month.
Thank you.
So as of this Monday, we are no longer in the building moratorium. You know, the last meeting, but new comp and zoning were adopted, in case you weren't here.
Thank you.
And what do we see update?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so to date, we've installed two hundred and sixty of the new meters, I can tell you, this month so far, just on the new meters alone, over a million gallons of water have been used, 'cause we can drag that now, I know there are people in this audience who have not called in to get their new meters yet.
They know when you flush your toilet.
Yeah, literally, I mean, I'm calling, I come in sometimes on a Saturday, and I'll call people, and I'm like, you have a leak, and they're like, what, and I'm like, you have a leak, 'cause I can see it, that you're running water constantly for twenty-four hours, and one guy called back and said, my hose was running, and I didn't even know it, so they, they do work, collections are a little bit slow on what we're receiving compared to what we're billing, so come August, we're gonna send out a collections letter, we did this last year for the re-levee, and within two weeks, we brought in over eighty thousand dollars worth of revenue, so to keep it more steady, 'cause approximately a third of the residents don't pay their water bill for whatever reason, so the idea's to try and generate a more steady flow of income, rather than waiting for re-levee time to get all that money freed back.
Anything on, throwing anything on grants you wanna mention?
My little love, sorry.
And we have a meeting on Wednesday, to discuss.
For the year forward.
Yep. That's a big one.
All right, um, we'll jump into the resolutions, uh, Resolution twenty-five zero zero nine-nine to adopt a memorandum of agreement with the full-time police and police dispatcher contracts, have a motion, motion, Steve, have a second, please.
Second.
Vernon, questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Do they need roll call for that?
Yeah, I would roll call this one.
All right, let's do a roll call, Vernon?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom, yes, Donna?
Yes.
Steve, yes. Into the roll call, motion passes five zero, thank you very much. Resolution twenty-five zero one zero zero to approve Pittsburgh Tower group to internally inspect Village water tanks at Bryant Crossing and Clinton Drive for a cost not to exceed two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, and we kind of explained a little bit about that earlier, have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second, Vernon, have a second, Steve, any other questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you, twenty-five zero, zero one zero one, to approve AccuData as the new Village time clock and payroll processing vendor at a cost not to exceed twelve thousand dollars per year, have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, have a second?
Second.
Susan, so we're changing our process a, a little bit here, for quite a bit, because everything that's been done previously, had been done manually, um, from the time clock system that you're getting a report, then that information is put down on paper, and then from there, we go to a, a person that does the payroll, and that would then get entered into a system called A D P, and all the reporting that comes out on the backend that we need to send up to New York State was all manual, so now, this process will be all integrated into the system, so that when reports need to be sent up, Leslie doesn't sit there and do, and does every single employee be figuring out, and these, and these reports aren't there, so she needs to figure out how much is going where, to what, to who, and now all that stuff will be done through integration with the, with the payroll system and the time clock system, so it'll be, uh, a much smoother process, so we'll get that moving as quick as we can, okay, if you don't mind making that contact tomorrow? Perfect, thank you. All right, so with that, we had that, that was the comment, so, any other comments from the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, next is twenty-five zero one zero two to approve facilities request form for Hudson Valley Walk Softball Clinic to be held from July seventh through August twenty-eighth on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from five P M to eight P M at Woodfield Park, have a motion?
Motion.
All right, Steve, Donna, give you a second.
Second.
Any other questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, excuse me? Okay, thank you, Resolution twenty-five zero one zero three to approve the free document shredded day sponsored by Senator Scoofus to be held on Saturday, June twenty-first from nine A M to twelve P M at Veterans Memorial Square, have a motion, motion, Steve, second?
Second.
Vernon, questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you, Resolution twenty-five zero one zero four to adopt Local Law Number Two of the year twenty-twenty-five, amending chapter two sixty of the Village Code, street and sidewalk, sidewalk cafes, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Donna's on the motion, have a second, please. Vernon, any other questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, Resolution twenty-five zero one zero, zero one zero five, to adopt Local Law Number Three of year twenty-twenty-five, amending chapter two ninety-seven of the Village Code for Water, have a motion?
Motion.
Susan, second?
Second.
Vernon? Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you, Resolution twenty-five zero one zero six to authorize budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect the necessary transfers of funds and to pay Village warrants, motion?
Motion.
Steve? Have a second, please, Donna, questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you, Resolution twenty-five zero one zero seven to approve the proposal of Public Sector H R Insultants L L C for the development of a new Village Employee Handbook at a cost not to exceed six thousand, five hundred dollars, have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, have a second?
Second.
Donna, actually, I'm gonna give that to Vernon, he did all the work, I might even give you the motion, any other questions, comments, and, and, you know, really did a great job on that, Vernon, really nice job. Uh, we have the motion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes five zero, um, now, public comment on any non-agenda items?
I have seven things here, when is, um, no, over the last couple of years, it seems like the contractors were getting to do things around here, aren't doing the jobs properly, you had North Street at Aherne, the storm drain was higher than the road, we're gonna pay to get that fixed again, the fence was put on backwards, and the people board ports, we paid to get it fixed, on the first, recently, I guess, um, the curb and sidewalks on Lincoln Drive, what's going on with that, that was bad cement they used.
Well, uh, they did some.
I'll finish this, then you can go through them.
I'm sure.
The new people board port, the baby, you said someone's gonna be done with that, now, this would be an old one, but the like, electrical conduit I showed you a picture of, that was there for a couple of days before I sent that picture, and it was right after the storms, crap got washed away, the next day, they threw the sand back on it, that needs to be buried, that, the code is buried now, who was the one who put it in, you need to bring it back and say, and who was the inspector that passed that?
There is a shale bank underneath there, they could not lower it any, any further.
Diamond saw, diamond blade, they could do it, then they should have bored a hole through it, that isn't a bad place, if some child comes in goofing off with a knife or an axe and hits it, it's supposed to be buried by code, and whoever passed it needs to be taken care of, the pond, the fountains, in the ponds, every year they work this year, whoever put them in, is it a different contractor?
No, same contractor.
Well, whatever's going on, they're, or paid for something, never not getting it.
The issue with that one is, is that when they put them in, apparently there is, um, water, weeds, whatever you wanna call them, that are getting jammed up inside the pump, and I've been chasing these guy, and I'll tell you, most of it, it's not us, it is, is trying to get people to respond is just ridiculous, so I just made a phone call, believe it or not, I'm trying to reach the president of this company, I don't know how big they are, but this guy, I've emailed, I've called, no response, and I'm gonna try to find somebody else that we'll go to, and, and forget these guys, because the bottom line is, what we're trying to do is put a plate down of some sort, and then coordinate, and then have the pump, the fountain, put on top of it, so it clears the area, so weeds don't get sucked up into it, and I've been waiting, probably, oh, close to a month now, so that's, that's in progress, but it's, just, they don't respond, it's, you know, for people that, in business to make money, it's really funny how they can, you know, fall off the edge of a cliff and, and for whatever reason not return a phone call.
Yeah, I don't know, but we paid phones, they should be.
I know, I agree.
The last question is something I brought up, and that you told me not to talk to DPW guys about it, that I shouldn't be bothering them, the roll bars, um, the zero turn loan bars, what's with them?
They're up.
But why were they up? Who took them off?
They weren't off, they were down, and the rule I was told that they were down.
They were not on the machines, I'm not lying.
Okay.
They were not on the machines.
I'm telling you what I was told.
Well, I'm telling you what I saw with my eyes.
All right.
They were taken off, somebody took them off.
Okay.
And they shouldn't be up, if they fell over without those roll bars over there, that's our fault, as long as they're on there, if they don't put them up, shame on them.
Right, so they're up.
So, if they told you they were on there, it's a lie.
Okay.
Whoever told you, obviously, don't do that, yeah?
Okay, I believe you.
That's my last question.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it, anybody else? Anything for the board?
One quick, real quick.
Yeah.
Just a follow-up on that, the, the, the department head of DPW has been at a meeting in some time now.
Mm-hmm.
I vaguely remember, didn't, didn't you have, beginning of your administration, you were requiring the department heads to attend all meetings?
No.
No, no.
They believed that we did, but it was not required.
I don't know if it was the previous administration that had it set up that way, I don't know, but, yeah, upon request, they'll be at the meetings, but for them to sit here, um, and their, their, our chief chooses to be here, 'cause we mandate them to, no, but, no, if they're needed, we ask them to be here, otherwise, they, they don't need to be.
Maybe we could add that to the list of quarter reports from the DPW, or quarter report from the, the department head, is that something we could get, instead of getting questions like this?
You know, what we've been talking here amongst the board is, we all are liaisons to different parts of the village, so I've been kicking around the thought of our next quarter, is that everybody can give a little update, like the building department, how many, how many permits they've done, how many violations have they done, so you get an idea, we get a, we get a. We get a, we get a report every two weeks, so, by monthly. So, you know, so far, I think in the first two weeks, they put out 22 permits, there's a number of COs, we have two violations, um, you know, we brought in $5,300. 59, so.
It was a high, um.
Yeah, it was a busy month. And it's June, so you're in the summer month. That was DPW?
No, that was building.
Building Department. But we, uh, we also keep track of all of that, all of the DPW jobs that go out. We use the IM Care system to track everything that's being done, so.
And they have a schedule. They actually have sheets they turn in every week, the areas that they've cut, the roads that where they picked up the sticks. So if a resident says, you know, my road wasn't done, the guys who are in the truck are supposed to be marking off the roads that they have done.
Are those notes public?
No. No, they're interdepartmental only.
I meet with the building department every week.
It's like Tom said, they told him the roll bars were on there. That's a blatant lie.
It's the building department.
So what they are writing down, I could write down something here and hand it to you and I guess you're just going to believe it.
No, not really.
Some people need to check it. What, let me ask, what do they say? Let me ask you this. Sometimes there's two guys digging holes to plant the trees, sometimes there's four. What is it per hour per man? Is it $250 if you have four guys? Dig about sometimes three times a week with the chipper, driving in circles. How many guys are doing it? Four guys? Like $75 an hour with benefits and everything?
Usually three.
Ridiculous. It should be done once a month.
Usually three.
Whether it's a storm or not. Pile them up like it used to be, you wait, just pile them up and then they pick them up.
Well, a lot of the stuff we do, Sean, is, is kind of weather dependent too.
It's sort of personal.
Yeah, we have a week, right? It's the last week of the month that we go and do this stuff. You have a lot of people out there doing maintenance to their properties, cutting stuff down, doing whatever they're doing, and they put it out there. So if it's a rainy day, we take the chipper out and we pick up the stuff that's out there. Rather than have stuff sit for, you know, because who the heck is going to run out the last month, last week of the month to remind themselves that it's day I'm going to start trimming trees? People do it all month long. So if it's a lousy day, we take the chipper out and we do it, being a little bit more progressive. And when people even, we have people even calling now, say, listen, I just cut something down. I know your week is, you know, the last week of the month, but if there's a chance someone can get it, it's, it's what we do. It's our customer service.
But you're getting too personal service on it. If they're out three days a week, and sometimes they are, and I've seen about that many times, that's ridiculous.
Why?
Because you'd only pick it up, because there's other things that could be getting done. There's storm drains that could be getting fixed, there's other things that can be done.
And I said, it's all weather dependent.
Why can't they cut the grass in the rain? I've seen commercial guys cut it all over the place in the rain. They have a raincoat on. These machines will cut white grass.
Because we have enough to do inside the shop, maintenance on, on the equipment, picking up stuff. I mean, we could have this conversation all day long about how and what we do in, in relation to what is in your head and what you think might be the way to do things.
I just think.
I just saying they can't go in the rain to cut grass, they can't go in the rain to other things, but they can't chip wood on the rain, they can't chip wood on the rain. I just, if it's a lousy day or if it did rain and you don't want to go out and, and, you know, safety, I don't want a guy on a hill and have the mower slipping down the hill, right? You could have that problem.
That's when you tell them when they cut the flats.
You know, I mean.
This is a losing battle.
Right, it just.
Well, it's a losing battle because it's, there's so much that's not getting done.
Well, I disagree with you.
I disagree.
You, you like to, and, and I appreciate what you look for because when I drive around, I pretty much do the same thing. And I'm looking for the things that need, need attention, need to get done and, and prioritize stuff. But we have enough on our list between taking care of resident issues, taking care of the water meters, we have.
Emergency.
We have two dedicated workers for the water meters, right? You're only on water meters, that was quoted at one point.
What's that?
You have two dedicated installers of water meters.
Right. But again, if it's a rainy day, stuff's going on, we'll put two more people on the meters. So that's, that's the beauty in some cases with, with the people that we have and the titles that they have, is that we can have basically 11 people all doing the same job. Like the other day, they all went out for chainsaw training, right? We're, we're taking it, uh, an approach to get everybody trained on everything they can that's related to their job.
That's what I agree.
And we, and we went through, we just got a list of classes from the Local 17 right up on Little Britain Road, and we're just, and we were trying to be progressive with these guys in between training and making sure that they're safe, and then they're doing a good job. And we get a lot of compliments. I, and you're, and you're critical. I get it. You sit, you're just looking at stuff, which is not wrong, but it's just, you know, it's just stuff that people email us all day long, go into the IM Care system and say, this tree fell, that, uh, storm drain is starting to creep, which is great. It, it helps us so that we can prioritize what we need to do. And at the end of the day, we also need to come up with our paving project, and North Street is the paving project for this year. Besides a couple of other roads, if we can afford it, that we will, will, will do. But, you know, we're, we're 11 people, 12, including the supervisor, all over the place. So, and, and, you know, I take your criticism sincerely. I appreciate that. And we put it in the system and we put the guys on it. Like the list that we just talked about was what, was proposed two weeks ago. And I think we're doing a good job addressing those things within a two-week timeframe.
Well, it's about time, there is an answer coming. There's a lot of questions are asked and never answered.
Well.
And you are starting answering, which is good.
That's good. No? Thank you. And your questions are wonderful. Yes, sir.
What'd you say, 11, 11 in DPW now? I thought we had 15. We lose people?
Twelve with Chris. Yeah, no.
We hired a couple, didn't we hire a couple?
We haven't, whoever, whoever, uh, left since we've been here, they've been rehired. So we haven't, um, really increased. We did budgets for something, uh, an FTE and DPW for this year, but we have a bigger need here to assist Christine. We're pursuing a, um, a village clerk assistant deputy.
Full-time deputy.
Don't we have one?
No.
Not a full-time deputy.
Just so they know, there have been 23 DPW issues on IM Care just so far for this month.
And remember with the rain, they're falling behind. It's been rough.
We don't have an assistant clerk?
No, we don't. We have part-time clerks, front window clerks.
No, we never, we never got there. We held off because of the insurance. It's, it's 40K and it, it wraps up the budget.
Megan.
Megan was part-time.
Part-time, here, everybody was part-time.
We all.
We came, she was the only full-timer.
Still on.
She's still the only full-timer.
No, solely, everybody's part-time.
We always sat by since before on the year.
And we're, we're at full shift except Megan left and we were kind of grooming her into that position. And she was, you know, becoming good at all a lot of different things. And then personal stuff came up and then, but at the end of the day, I went to Chris and I said, listen, you're, you're doing okay. This would enhance a little bit and add another position, but I said, I have to steal it if you're okay with that.
Meaning DPW Chris.
Right, DPW Chris needing to get a deputy clerk for her full-time. Because we really do need someone. She, she puts in so much time, I can't give her time. That's how much time she puts in. And, and she's the best at the end of the day, but she's, she's feeling it.
Over three decades.
Really?
It's old.
Was your perfect.
Come on.
Yeah.
She's awful clean.
Just, you know, maybe back off the pond. You know, it's looking nice with the trees there, we got benches now, cement beds. Could we maintain that area? Obviously, it looks like we're going to turn it into a park kind of with all the benches and the trees and whatnot. Maybe eventually sidewalk is in our future.
Yeah.
But like, we got these saplings growing in front of these benches. Can't, you know, I like to, I like to look at the birds on the.
That's why they went for their chain.
On the lake, you know?
Chainsaw training so that we can take those saplings down.
Beautiful.
So you'll have a nice view of the pond the way it used to be when it was built.
Used to be able to fish in there.
I used to fish there as a kid.
Yeah. I'm a member of Black Rock. I gotta talk to the fish guy and see what we can do besides getting the fountain fixed that we can, you know, stock it with something. So the kids, when they do fish, because years ago, damn in the 90s, I'm probably too young then, but we had fishing derbies. We had Black Rock actually come down with speedboats and we didn't put them in the pond, but the kids were all cool and excited. They brought their fishing poles and, you know, if they caught something, we were measuring it and giving out little prizes here and there. It was cool. So we want to kind of reintroduce that. But we got to cut those saplings down. Yes.
You can actually buy fish on the internet and they ship them to you.
Really?
You know, at one point, we, we thought we were bound by DEC regulations and then we found out through the prompt committee with the planner that because of the size of that, we are not. So it was regulated about what could be taken down, what could be cleared out.
You can, you can touch the stuff on the edges, but if you're going to enter the pond,